Okay, well, everyone who could call a meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Senator Black of the United States of America. I'm Senator Malala, for instance, on a nation under God, who has a world with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a, we have our audience of citizens, anyone wishes to speak? Out either through Zoom or here in the audience? Yes, please. If you could, John, sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I get it. We're easy here, name and the address.
My name is Rita Diftmet. My address, 135 Devonshire Way.
I read it. We're easy, very easy.
I'm here because of this ordinance that we currently have that somehow got hacked through. Allow me to be in motorcycle speed in residential neighborhood. I happen to be personally affected by this ordinance to the effect that it's now beginning to affect my life pretty significantly. I have a 21-year-old special needs daughter who asks regularly. And it always seems to be that when she goes down to nap, bikes start and they start and they go, and they go, and they go, and they go. To the point where she can't nap. I have tried to shut the windows and do all the things to drive a bike, but you could only do that for so long. Summertime, trying to be so cool. You can't do that in peace. We have rear, 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 rear constantly. These are the afternoon hours, it happens in the morning, it could be any time from eight till evening at night. Sometimes a little bit later. We have been to the pool with friends and family, then at picnics that we hosted, bikes start. And it's not just a blooming annoyance, it's major. To the point, we not only, we stop speaking to one another because we can't hear one another speaking. But as you look across our lawn, there's this dust just overtaking the entire lawn. We have over two acres and they're completely filled with dirt. I mean, it's a cloud, you can see it, it's not just something that, oh, it might be a little bit here, there, it is a cloud. I regularly have our windows professionally cleaned, we have our house professionally washed. How many times a year do I need to do that now? Because it's no longer effective. We are at the point where we are considering selling our home. But we're also looking at what is the impact on the sustainability of our home? Individuals come to our home to look at this big beautiful home and all of a sudden the whole thing will start up. Where they walk into the back of the property, they see the trail that they made. And it's not just one, there are multiple bikes or ATVs at one time. So I feel like I'm in the middle of a racetrack. And this was once our sanctuary where we would go out, have dinner on our deck. Or have a glass of wine as we're grilling our steaks. In peace. It's disturbing. Very disturbing. So I would like to see this ordinance either significantly changed or we send it. Thank you.
That's your question, right there, just, so. So it wasn't always this way?
No.
So when did, when did it get progressively worse or did it?
It's been getting progressively worse. I'd say the past two to three years have been progressing to the point where.
Why do you think, why do you think that is? Just in your opinion?
I'm, I'm, my guess is the boys that live in the house that is providing this track. Number one are becoming more of age to be able to ride these things. Or, and they may have friends that are now coming over and joining them. So it's no longer just one bike occasionally, which, you know, everybody, I've had it over, a whole many bike when I was growing up, I understand that. But to, to the point where it's like a raceway where there's a professional track over there. And I don't know if it's for training purposes, I don't know what, what is it, just for fun, but we can't handle it anymore. There's exhaust fumes.
Have you ever approached the neighbor?
I have not personally. I find, I would take first to call the police and I have not done that yet. But I just think, even if we were to do that, that doesn't stop them from doing. Because it's not correcting the problem.
Yeah, it's an complicated issue.
Yes, it is.
So the tracks are on the property behind you, is that your property or their property?
Their property.
They're not trucked, is it? But I know in construction, we create possible a lot of noise, we're responsible for that problem. While the B and auto things. You should have every right to enjoy your property, I agree with that. I don't think the existing regulations would be important enough to protect it. I don't know if we can remedy that. I'll be glad to listen to the suggestion, how to write such a thing. We need to shake this problem, we just gotta find the right out.
We're working, yeah, no, that's why, that's why we're here, we appreciate hearing from you, so, you know, we could get the depth of the problem, you know. And talk to, you know, other folks too that told us about it and, yeah, that's why we're here, we're gonna have the ordinance and we'll definitely see what we can do.
I'll be following.
Yeah, good, now please do, yeah, please.
Rita may ask all the questions.
Sure, of course, yeah, of course.
On the days where, on the most extreme days, how many hours of ATV would you say? Well, how bad, how bad does it actually get?
It's bad, I would say in excess of four to five hours, depending on.
Is it continuous?
It seems so, I don't know if they're taking turns or, you know, they may stop for lunch. I don't know what their calendar or, you know, maybe they go away to races, I don't know. There are some days like the rainy weather, they're not out there. So we've actually had two day, it's quite nice. But you get into the nicer weather or even the dry weather, it's awful. You know, my, my pool is constantly dirty. I feel like that's a good portion of what my weeks have been is back to me in my pool, dirt is happening.
Is it every day during the week?
During summer and when they come home from school, when school starts. It's, I'm gonna say it seems to cease when the snow falls. However, I don't know if they're gonna start with the snowmobiles or whatever next, I just don't know.
Have they got snowmobiles reported?
Someone in the neighborhood have, I don't know with us, but, you know, I can take a snowmobile and root down again, that's okay, but every day, no.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I won't be long.
No.
I won't be long enough to attend that.
Yes. Again, are you telling it?
Yes, exactly, so good afternoon, good evening and I can't forget this opportunity. I actually have a couple of questions for Attorney Copeland. Roman Borshuk 121 Duncharley. I have a couple of questions for Attorney Copeland.
Yeah.
So I was attending the last town council meeting and I listened to Attorney Copeland's review of the ordinance 510 and 1920. And I believe the ordinance you're reading was that the ordinance is written perfectly. And it fits enforcement by police as outlined in 17.1.30, is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir, I apologize, I'm having an awful time hearing. I, I believe that you've identified a particular provision of the ordinance, could you give me that number again, 17 dash what?
Sure, actually, I'll start my statement again, which I think is relevant to this discussion. During your overview and comment of the ordinance, you specifically stated that the ordinance was well-written and perfect, is that correct?
I did state that the ordinance was well-written, yes.
I believe you're right. It was to be enforced by police as outlined 17.1.30, is that correct?
You're, you're asking me whether it is to be enforced by the police department and that is, I, I believe that was your question, sir, yes?
Okay, great, one other thing you stated.
It's in 17-127, sir, that page a lot of the ordinance.
Great, thank you. You also stated that you had a conversation with the chief of police regarding the monitoring and enforcement of the ordinance.
I, I did not state that, I've never talked to the chief about this ordinance.
I thought I heard that last week.
So, so you said at the meeting, at the last meeting? Probably did, but based on that, those other recommendations being.
My understanding was, the last meeting, maybe I misunderstood that the police department has metal devices that can be put in place to monitor this activity, is that correct?
We'd have to check what they have, do you know about that?
They have it, this morning they have it, I don't know if they have it or they rented, but I know the extent is they have. I'm sorry, that's always led us to believe. I had a conversation last week and these answering devices were in, um, had the ability to have them in place and.
Yeah, they may, they may have them, if we don't, we can, we can get some, you know, if we don't have them.
So the other question I have is, ordinance is by their very definition are put in place, returned out safely and well fair to the community, correct?
It's correct, alright.
Do we feel, when we say that this ordinance is written, does that, does it promote that?
I mean, that's a hard question to answer, but I would say that it doesn't, I don't know why to promote it, but it's just looking at the facts.
Enables it, let's say it enables.
I don't know if it enables it and I'm just guessing that perhaps the folks that maybe if it's a, if it is a, you know, hypothetical violation. You know, now with the ordinance or, you know, could disregard it, I'm just saying that a lot of, you know, we have to look at the facts and look at the ordinance, but. I mean, it is here for a reason, if they're violating it, then, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it's here for.
So, and the other thing.
Until we know about the violations, which we do now, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know to enforce it, obviously.
So, I'm just saying, I was trying to make a point, I'm saying whether this is an actual, I know it's an ordinance, but does it really, it's illegal or?
Does.
It really meet the underlying language of section 17-120 state legislation? So really incorporate that, and I'm not gonna get into that, but something to, to look at because, you know, again, full disclosure. I love motorized vehicles, okay, I love ATVs, motorcycles, snowmobiles. I could, you know, I have property, I could ride on my property all day long, right? Right, and have I? No, why? Because I respect the privacy and of my neighbors, that's why. And why, it's not suitable for residential neighborhood, it's little children, that, whatever, it's all sorts of things, the exhaust is harmful. It's not suitable for residential neighborhood. So, thank you again.
Yeah, no, yeah, no.
Yeah, no, no, we just want to make sure that, we evaluate, you know, really, you do a witness test, this is an ordinance, yeah, sure, it's legal, that's important. Really, it's protect the health and safety of all. We can't really talk about the effectiveness of the ordinance because we haven't posted.
Okay, so why don't we post it? Yeah, well, and that, and that really.
What would you, what would you suggest?
Well, yeah, that was the purpose of, you know, as we had our first ordinance committee meeting on this point, was to look at this and certainly. We're glad to hear from you folks, so we know what the potential violations are and now, you know, the next step would be.
All of the ordinance?
Yes, I, I mean, I think.
Let's discuss that. And we really wanna get to a situation where we're calling our, we've law enforcement officials, who, I, my, we really wanna call them in situations to enforce them, that way they can't be affected.
That's their job, enforcing their ordinance, yeah.
Spread pretty blown, a lot of things have changed in the past 10 years, okay, they should be applying crime, not enforcing, you know, things that really, these ordinances.
We have no other enforcement, you know, vehicle but the police department and that's, you know, that's what they do and they're happy to do it, of course.
When you say no violations. Our policemen are only trained to arrest people, they're trained to de-escalate the situation. Get both parties together and come up with a solution. You know, we have community-based officers, a local county, and they're gonna have to be our first line of defense, there's no, this isn't a building official. We're a dog catcher, it's gonna have to be a boy or a boy. So, so that's, again, that's another question, so that, every time this kind happens, triggers a reaction, so we have all the ones to make sure this is enforced. I mean, once you know, once they're quiet, they'll begin to monitor the situation.
Yeah.
I don't want a situation where, you know, people are watching. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's an inefficient process.
Well, that could, wow, I mean, I, 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 it's hard to say it's inefficient or not, we don't know yet, but, I mean, that's, that's the process. It's a, it's a pretty tried and true process, the ordinance and, and the police enforcing it, I do agree that once, once we know about it. Meaning the town is made aware of it along with the police department, I would think they would, you know, on their own, just, just monitor and, and that. You know, they're on patrol every day and night, 24/7, so they're the best ones to monitor, if they could drive by and roll down their window and hear it without any. And, you know, anybody calling or complaining or anything, so that's, that's where they're.
So are they, or are they swelping?
No. Yeah, no, we appreciate it and we're definitely, you know, it's serious, we get it, I mean, it's interfering with the use of your property and enjoyment, that's not right. And, yeah, we're, we're.
Yeah, I can tell you, Rita and the rest of the members, we don't want them in a position to be calling to us because we don't, yeah, this is a big waste of time. I mean, and the other thing, the couple I mentioned last time is that she was not here, the complaint should be anonymous. And the other thing is, why did somebody calls in to complain, you know, the child that's on a school bus and is at risk of being bullied?
I mean, I understand, so.
I'm sorry, but that's a whole different issue. It's not, it's not, so there's been a neighborhood, you live with people and you don't wanna cause a problem for your neighbor, but. The towns aren't gonna find line, they want you to enjoy your property and have the right to use it, but also we want your neighbor to have the same.
Absolutely.
And how, you know, whether it's zoning or annoying ordinance or, where's that finding line, will it stop that person from using his property? And prevent him from interfering with you, it's a balance again, for any government, it's understood.
Have, have you ever spoken to the neighbors?
Yeah.
You have, and what, just curious, what's their response?
It's a nice dialogue.
Oh, okay.
It was a nice dialogue.
Not, 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 nobody's upset?
No, he's dialogue, nice people, beautiful family and that, for sure. The problem is that, you know, parents can't always be looking over their kids, you know, after their kids, if they come home from school and there's a parental supervision, that can happen. So, but, you know, everything's beautiful, I wanna live in harmony with everybody, you know, right? Hey, trust me, I, 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 ATVs. This place is full of people. I'm like, you know, I, I, I don't want that, I come home from work, I, you know, I'm exhausted, I'm on track, we always sometimes, I come home, I don't.
I mean, we definitely hear it, we just.
Thank you for your time.
We're gonna work on it, we will work on it.
I just wanted to make sure, because we don't wanna become bad here every weekend, we just want some preservation, yeah, this issue is, sorry, I can't.
Oh, we get it, yeah, thank you. So do we have any other enforcement mechanism other than the police, it's, it's an ordinance, it's not the zoning regulation, so we're not like, we couldn't, it's not like we could use the zoning enforcement off the surface. We go down and so we're just trying to think of.
I mean, it's specifically laid out in the ordinance, right, that it's the Califa Park, that's drug. And with, with that, if there, it might be environmental protection, it should reduce the noise, maybe.
Another option we can explore too, yeah, but that's, we gotta look at some options, which we will, we are, and that's why, you know, the, for, yeah.
Please, Senator Bullock, there's some items to put in there.
Yes.
Since we had, I stopped at 6:30, I wanted to cover that.
Yes.
Sure, I'll go very quickly, but can I just inquire, the two speakers, are they speaking of, because I did have a very hard time hearing them? I, I can hear you fine, I'm not quite sure whether that microphone is on or they, I, I just am not sure, but. Were they speaking of the same property, they complaining about the same property?
Correct, yes, yes.
Because I would like, I would like to take a look at the property and I won't do that, okay? Um, so just, just again, my understanding and I appreciate the fact that they did appear and give some more detail about the extent of the complaint that they have. So the complaints, obviously, they focus on noise, but there are other, and noise is considered a pollution issue. But they also have other pollution issues and the exhaust, and that's a dual issue because it generates noise as well as other pollution. And then, of course, the dust issue. And in terms of, I think, your options, and there's an advocacy here of prohibiting the use, I saw in some of the documents that had been submitted, I'm not sure. If it is the same neighbors who had submitted what, what was circulated around. But, you know, there, there is advocacy of prohibiting the activity by means of repealing the ordinance. And, and the issue I think that you have with that is this activity was going on without the ordinance and that's why the ordinance was passed in the first place. So I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't recommend, you know, you repealing the ordinance. I think what the better path is, is to really look at, you know, are there further limitations that could be imposed on the, the use itself? On the activity itself so that, you know, the, it's, it, this, what they're complaining of is not going on to the extent that it is. Obviously, you know, it sounds like there was an attempt to try to resolve and I was glad, you know, to hear that there was that effort that was made. So we have a property owner that is aware of the fact that, you know, they have neighbors who are, it's impacting neighbors' quality of life, what's going on in their property. And so overall, you know, ideally, what we would wanna get would be a commitment to long-term cooperation if we weren't going the route of amending the ordinance. It, and again, I have some question as to whether or not there's been enforcement of the ordinance as written. Because we don't have specific facts enough to, for me to actually determine whether that's the case. I have not spoken to the police department at all and I, you know, now that we know the property address, I can do that, you know, I'll have a conversation with them. But in terms of the amendments to the ordinance, you know, we would want to direct any amendments to address the specific complaints. You know, one obvious thing, and I just throw this out there as an example, is the potential to further limit the hours of this use going on. You know, that's one thing that is very obvious. The other thing is, is you do not have a specific noise ordinance and, and I know that, you know, in some of the papers or comments about how. The, the vehicles that are in use, the generation of noise is not at the decibel level that it once was because. You know, you've got different vehicles now being manufactured than what were being manufactured at the time that the ordinance was passed. I know that you have to go to another meeting at 6:30, I wanted to point something out to you. And, you know, when we meet again, I will have taken a look at the property and I will have specific recommendations with regard to amendment. I do have a question before you go and I will ask that after I just go quickly through these two statutory provisions. So in the chapter that covers snowmobiles, all terrain vehicles, dirt bikes and mini motorcycles, which is chapter 255 of the general statutes, there are two provisions that. With regard to municipal regulation, there's one that concerns, it's titled Municipal Regulation of Operation Use of Snowmobiles and All Terrain Vehicles, Penalties, Seizure and Forfeiture. I just wanna point out to you that that does not appear, obviously, by its language, as you read it, you will, you will note this, to be limited to public property. But when we look, and so that's section 14-390, but when we look at 14-390M. Which is Municipal Regulation of Operation and Use of Dirt Bikes and Mini Motorcycles on Public Property. The relief there is, again, limited to use of those types of vehicles, so dirt bikes and mini motorcycles. On public property and so the definition, if you, again, you read through it, you'll see, and this is in subsection D of 14-390M. You'll see, it says for the purposes of this section in section 7-148, that's the Municipal Powers Act by which you, you gained authority to pass. An ordinance of the type that you have. It indicates subsection D1, dirt bike means a two-wheeled motor recreational vehicle designed to travel over unimproved terrain and not designed for travel on a highway as defined in section 14-1. It doesn't, dirt bike does not include an all-terrain vehicle as defined in section 14-379 or a motor-driven cycle as defined in section 14-1. And two, mini motorcycle has the same meaning as provided in section 14-289J. So I just point out that difference to you because, you know, I will have to take that into account when I determine what my recommendations are going to be. Because there's clearly a difference here. So when we talk about limitations on the municipal power conveyed through 7-148 of the general statutes, there's, there's clearly an intention here. So I'm gonna be looking at why that is, to see if there's any legislative history that guides us and so forth. My last question, and well, I guess my only question to you for tonight, it sounds like there are a couple of comments made that. The idea of prohibiting the use altogether is not, is not something, not a path that you wanna go down. Are there any thoughts on that? That you wanna share, if you wanna think more about it, that's fine.
Prohibited altogether?
I'm sorry? Yes, prohibit it all, prohibit it altogether.
I mean, I think we need, I think public comment, I hate to do that, but, but, yeah, we, I think we have to do, consider that some more and, and maybe before we do that. Take some other steps to limit the disruption for the neighbors, you know, wherever it may be, obviously, we change this ordinance, it changes it for the whole town. So we just need to make sure we take that into account if there's something less severe than that to start with. You know, if, 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 that would be my thought, you know, and then we go from there, you know, we have to see what happens if we, you know, whatever changes we make and whatever enforcement we do.
Sure.
Reevaluate probably, right?
I just think I have one thought, very, very quickly, looking at the timeframe, I mean, 8 AM to 8 PM does seem like a long period of time. And I know as you're winding down on the night, you wanna go out to the porch, have a glass of wine and a steak. That is obviously a big disruption, so I, I think that maybe adjusting that timeframe was something that jumped out to me, but obviously, that's something that we'll have to look into more. So that we can, we can eat with everybody.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a long timeframe and I think you mentioned Jennifer, which I, you know, know, they're different now, ordinance was passed a long time ago, now a long time ago, many years ago. Things are different, once we know, things have progressed. So I think that's something else in the ordinance we could look at.
I mean, so just, yeah, input some time. The material that Senator Bullock shared, I don't know if you have, you know, I don't have it, so.
I don't, I don't, we don't have a station that put it up.
Yeah, right, so if you can, send it to the group or send it to me, I'll forward it to the ordinance committee. So, uh, again, send it to the group or send it to me. I'll forward it to the ordinance committee, again, review it. And then perhaps meet again, we can discuss some, uh, two things. One, the enforcement. Of thing, and the second one, I would suggest, uh, specific recommendations that, uh, we might wanna discuss.
Yeah, absolutely. So, look, look, yeah, let's, let's do that and let's, uh, before we go, so.
And there will be a variety of recommendations because, you know, dealing, there are ways to deal with dust. Um, which Mayor, you're probably, and, and, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Kippola, you're probably aware of as well, just from your time on planning and zoning. Like, there's methods of dealing with the dust issue. So, you know, I'll, I'll make as many suggestions as I can.
That's good. Yeah, no, we, yeah, we look forward to that and, uh, we'll do that statute, uh, on our own and we'll be, uh, there and so. Um, the, the week of the, uh, seventh, November seventh, we're, the council meeting next week, so, uh, I'll give us some. Do, what, what, uh, what do we think about that? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. How could I forget about that? How could we forget about that? Yeah, that's how, that's how I like, I like to forget about it, yeah. Exactly, yeah, thank goodness. Yes, let's do, we'll do that. We go the fourteenth, so it'll be, uh, uh, council meeting on the fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we do the seventeenth?
We have something, no, we have, uh, the fifteenth, we have seventeen, well, we do seventeen first at six o'clock, if that works.
Yes, oh, we have something on the sixteenth, right? I think we have it on the meeting schedule. So the seventeenth at six thirty. Six o'clock.
If we could do six o'clock, because that is a planning and zoning night, so.
No, six o'clock. Uh, on the, on the fifteenth or.
Feel the public hearing the.
Uh, you time it on the third or, or the following one, the fifteenth? I mean, I. The fourteenth.
I do, I do have a conflict on the fourteenth. I'm sorry, I have another meeting scheduled.
Well, a lot of maybe, maybe.
We can do one of this fifteen, before the council meeting, don't get on stuff, one hour.
Yeah, yes, yes, let's do that. So, November fifteenth. At six o'clock, we have a council meeting at seven, so it'll be, you know, we, I, I think what we're, what we've just discussed, I think we. Probably know how it'll go and we'll start with that. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jennifer. Uh, we'll just go ahead and have a motion to adjourn. Second, second, a little favor. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.